The Minnehaw County Planning Commission will make a few beginning introductory comments. The Planning Commission will first take action on the consent agenda. Following action on the consent agenda, the County Planning Commission will continue on the regular agenda items. As a courtesy again to everyone here tonight, please make sure your cellphones are taken, are turned off. Any final action taken on a conditional use permit request will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed at the Planning Office by May 30th at 5:00 P.M. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on June 20th on or after 9:00 A.M. Those meetings are in this courthouse, this current room. Any final tack, excuse me, any final action taken on rezoning application tonight will be referred to the County Commission for a public hearing on June 27th at 9:00 A.M. Meetings are in this, County Commissioners are held in the same room. This time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes of the March 27th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members of any item on the consent agenda? You see, none. Next, I will read each item of the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the Commission later in the meeting. Again, item one will be approval of the minutes. Item number two is a conditional use permit number 1725 to allow a Class 1 major home occupation firearms repair, firearms repair. Petitioner is Jason Bannick. Location is 26527 461st Avenue, approximately six miles south of Hartford. This would allow a Class 1 major home occupation firearms repair. Item number three, conditional use permit number 1727 to make available three building eligibilities. And this is, petitioner is Rodney Vanderly. It's approximately one and a half miles northeast of Colton. This would make available three housing eligibilities. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit number 1728 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 3,200. Kevin Van Dyke is the petitioner. Location is at 48210 268th Street, approximately two miles east of Sioux Falls. And this would allow 3,200 square feet of total accessory building area. Item number five, conditional use permit 1729 to allow a single-family dwelling. The petitioner is Stacy Sandholm. The property owner is Randy L. White. It's approximately three and a half miles northwest of Hartford. And this would allow a single-family dwelling. Item number six, conditional use permit 1730 to allow, Scott, you were going to comment on this one.
I'd like this one pulled, item number six.
Okay, item number six has been pulled from the agenda. Okay, item number seven, conditional use permit 1731 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 7,420 square feet. This is, petitioner is Adam Wolfell. It's a location is 25975 480th Avenue, approximately two miles northwest of Brandon. This would allow 7,420 square feet of accessory building area. Item number eight, conditional use permit number 1732 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 1,728. The petitioner is Kevin Brockmuller. Location is 2575 Frederick Circle, approximately two and a half miles north of Sioux Falls. This would allow 1,728 feet of total accessory building area. Item number nine, conditional use permit 1733 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building requesting 1,536. Josie Assam, Assheim, is the petitioner. It's at 226380 McCarty Circle, approximately two miles southeast of Brandon. This would allow 1,536 square feet of total accessory building area. Item number 10, conditional use permit 1734 to transfer one building eligibility from Track 2 Funky's Edition to Track 3 of Funky's Edition. Petitioner is Joseph Funky. The owner is Richard Funky. It's approximately three and a half miles east of Sioux Falls. That would transfer one building eligibility. Item number 11, conditional use permit 1735 to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building requesting 2,800. Terry Hanson is the petitioner. It's at 26482 Landon Lane, approximately two miles west of Sioux Falls. This would allow 2,800 square feet of total accessory building area. Item number 12, conditional use permit 1736 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area requesting 2,688 square feet. John Sackman is the petitioner. It's at 24910 474th Avenue, approximately a half a mile north of Baltic. This would allow 2,688 square feet of building accessory area. And conditional use permit number 1737 to exceed 1,200 square feet requesting 3,380. And this is Kevin R. and Robin, Kevin and Robin Hempel. Their location is 25793 470th Avenue, approximately a half a mile south of Crooks. This would allow 3,380 square feet of total accessory building area. That would be all the items on the consent agenda. I saw no objections from the audience. We will remind the audience, so please turn your sign back in and get your $50 refund back since we do need those green signs back to be posted for next month for people. So at this time, Commissioners, action.
Move approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Six being removed.
Yes, with item, with the exception of item six, right Scott? That was the number?
Yeah, six has been pulled.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. If your item was on the consent agenda, you are free to go. Your item has been approved. Thank you for your patience. You got to learn about sewage bio solids tonight is a bonus.
Lucky night.
Okay, we'll continue now with the regular agenda.
Okay. I, Scott Anderson again, and this is a conditional use permit request 1730 to allow a leaf, grass, and branch drop-off site for the city of Hartford. And the city of Hartford owns a five-acre parcel which is directly north of their existing sports complex, city park with the soccer fields and baseball fields. And this, and it is right next to that new manufacturing plant that's on the corner of 258th and, what is that, Western Avenue?
Central State Steel.
Central State Steel. So basically what they're proposing is to allow a drop-off site for the residents of their community to drop off leaf, grass, branches, and some tree debris. And they would have a roll-off dumpster which the branches would be piled into. And the reason this is pulled is that the city, I'll give you the abbreviated version. The condition number two outlined some hours of operation. In the narrative that was submitted to me by the city, they basically indicated that they would like to have hours of operation on Wednesday evenings from 4:00 P.M. to 8:00 P.M. And then basically on Saturdays. And they just would like, the city requested that that condition be amended slightly to allow some flexibility in case they wanted a different day. And they didn't want to have to come back through a conditional use permit application. So I would just ask that condition number two be amended to allow for the time stated. And then we add a statement saying that upon request by the city of Hartford, the planning director may vary those hours. And I think we can work closely with the city of Hartford to address whatever hours they need. They, you can read through the staff report, but it's a fairly benign use of just some leaves and drop-off. They've been working, the city of Hartford has been working with locations, people that want to use some of the leaf and grass. I think they've worked with someone that's going to grind up some of the wood and branches to reuse all that. So they're striving to, you know, reutilize that pro, that material and not let it just go to the landfill. So we're recommending.
Can I ask you one quick?
Yeah.
You're still just saying a certain day of the week and Saturday?
That's, yeah. And right now, that's, that's the time. But the city of Hartford thought that if Wednesday night doesn't work out, they may want to move it to a Thursday night. And then they don't want to have to come back for an entire amendment if it's just a minor change from one night to another night. So we're recommending approval with the five conditions. I would be glad to read those if you want, but.
Scott, can I have one question?
Yeah.
This is a wide-open area and there's no screening at all.
There is no screening. It is wide open. I'll show you the picture. So they, they're going to have, they're going to fence it with a barbed wire fence, but they're not putting in any screening. It'll just be some roll-off dumpsters. They'll take care of them, empty them on a regular basis. If you wanted to add screening, I suppose you could. Teresa Seidel, the city manager's here, and she'd be glad to address.
Or at least plant some trees around the perimeter, something. That was my thought. Okay. Any other questions for Scott?
Is this for temporary use or want to use this permanently, do you know?
I think that, I think they would like to have it sort of as an ongoing use.
Let Teresa speak.
Yeah, we can.
Hartford, come forward, please. State your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Seidel, and I'm the city administrator for Hartford. And as Scott indicated, yeah, we're looking for just a site for grass clippings for our residents, leaves, and tree branches. It is wide open, but it's not a permanent storage area. Everything that brought, is brought in there, we're going to haul out. So we're going to have roll-off dumpsters there for the grass clippings. When those get full, we'll take them, haul them off, and bring them new ones. Scott did indicate, we are working with an area farmer who's going to take some of them, grass clippings. We're hoping to work with a couple other ones. And like I said, maybe reuse as much of the material we can so then there's, you know, less material going to the landfill. We also are working with, for the tree branches, Mueller Pallet Company in Sioux Falls here. They're going to come out once a week and any tree branches we have accumulated, they'll come and mulch them up and they'll take the debris from them. So we plan to have it an ongoing use, you know, basically open from April to October, you know. Of course, won't be as needed in the winter time, but the material there, like I said, will continuously be taken off the site. It won't be stockpiled there, you know, with these huge piles of grass and leaves. Every week, they'll be hauled off in the dumpsters and then empty ones will be replacing them.
Okay, so there's no plans to do any screening at all or anything?
We don't plan to unless you make us, no, but, yeah. It, like I said, it's a five-acre lot. Right now, we have basically the same kind of site in town, but it's kind of in the middle of town. Residents are popping up around it, so you know, it's kind of unsightly if you've got new homes built there. It's kind of by one of our park areas. So we're just trying to move it from that site to maybe a site that, you know, isn't around so many residents and, you know, wouldn't be that eyesore for them.
Okay, well, I'm going to bring up the tree thing because I look at what we do with contractor yards, what we do with different things around the county. We require them to be screened. Even if it's something as simple as a row of oswellow trees all the way around the site, would screen it tremendously. It's not, wouldn't be much different than what we would do, but then that would have to be an added condition.
I do want to say one thing to that. We do own this five acres and we are actively selling it. Say we get another company in there, such as Central States, that would like to purchase five acres, you know, we would sell off the land and then either discontinue the site or move it somewhere else again. So, so I was going to say, I guess depending on who wants to buy the land, whether they want all the trees or not, I mean.
It's part of the Hartford Development Corporation thing or the city itself?
The city itself owns it, yeah, yeah.
Okay, any questions? Yes.
You have anybody overseeing this at all or people just on their gratis of going in and out and throwing it wherever they need to?
Well, right now, it is in town. And you're right, it's kind of, kind of problems.
Sometimes I can create, yeah, I have those pickups loud.
Yes, we've talked about it a few times in our city council meeting. We do plan, and that's kind of why we went to the hours of operation and why we're going to put the fence around it. So then, you know, we can have just set hours and otherwise gate it off. And we're going to, just started at the last council meeting about putting cameras up so we can kind of monitor the site. So if we get any trash dumped there that shouldn't be or whatnot, you know, we can follow up on that and hopefully kind of discourage that. I don't know if we will have somebody physically manning those hours yet or not. It may come to that where we may need to do that, but, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Teresa, this is going to be annexed into the city in the fairly near future, isn't it? I mean, would you require trees to be around it if it was in the city? I mean.
I was going to say, we would probably annex it. You're right, if we would sell it off and somebody build it, we'd require them to annex it into the city. And it depends on, I guess, what kind of use it would be. It'd go before our Planning Commission, just like this, for conditional use to see if, you know, when Central States came in, which is the manufacturing plant right next to it. We had them put up a dirt berm, basically, a rolling berm on the south side between them and our sports complex.
And they're not planning on using the entire five acres? It's just going to be a small portion of the five-acre parcel.
Yeah.
Has Hartford ever done anything regarding cutoff lighting?
Oh, not yet.
Central States is a prime example of lighting up the countryside instead of keeping light on their property.
I mean, we do have lighting regulations that they need to follow.
That was one of the worst examples of lighting out in the country I've seen in quite a while. I mean, I think Mike, to the north there, the farms in the north, he didn't need the yard light anymore. It was, it's that bad out there. So it's something you guys need to consider, I think, in the future. Cutoff lighting, that's what we require on commercial.
Okay. Looking to that.
Okay, any other questions for Teresa?
Just one quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Is there any provisions for any type of entrance or exit that would prevent people from tracking out onto the roadway? Whether it be gravel or?
Yes, you have that in one of your conditions for the staff is to put.
Just wanted to make sure that was.
Yep, and, and we're good with all the conditions that the staff recommends. We would just like that extra caveat added that, you know, I indicated to Scott. Right now, we'll do the Wednesday nights and the Saturdays, no problem. But if we get feedback from our public that, you know, Wednesdays aren't working, you know, move it to Thursdays or whatever, we just like a little bit of flexibility if it's okay with the county.
So they're required to have a 24-foot wide driveway with four inches of crushed rock for the first 50 feet. So that'll keep people from tracking mud onto 258 of the county highway.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this? If not, we will call for discussion or action.
Mr. Chairman, I, I understand your concerns on, on the trees, but I am not worried. I do think that having flexibility in the hours of operation, I don't want to micromanage dropping a load of branches off. So I don't know that, I think we ought to give them as much flexibility as they want on it. Maybe not after midnight or something. Anyway, I, if they're comfortable with, with the conditions that are on there and the flexibility that's been suggested, I'll make a motion to approve it with the, those conditions and that flexibility.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Okay, a motion of second. Any other discussion? You see, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now we move to item number 14. Conditional use permit number 1718 requesting 13,440 square feet of space. Kevin Hookman is presenter.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. I just will make the comment that this item has been withdrawn by the petitioner. And at this point, he'll just like an acknowledgement of the withdrawal. He does not plan on building.
Any action on that then?
The motion to acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal.
That's my motion.
One second.
A motion of second to acknowledge the withdrawal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Onto number 15, rezoning.
Item number 15, the applicant has requested that this be continued to the July 20th, or sorry, June 26th meeting. They're still in the process of preparing their plan and laying out their proposal.
Okay, make a motion to defer action till June 26th.
A motion of second?
Second.
A motion of second to defer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Yes, hope.
Mr. Chairman, permission.
How long can they be bermed?
Will let Scott answer that?
Well, they can continue to defer it as, as long as the Planning Commission grants them a deferral. But at some point, they will, it'll become evident that they're not making any progress. And at that point, typically after one or two deferrals, the Planning Commission would just deny it and they would have to come back at a later, resubmit at a later time.
We had one, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That they was going to have an animal petting zoo or something and never showed up and we canceled it after, was it the second time that he?
Second deferral, we said.
Yeah.
Start over.
Are you neighbors, adjacent property owners?
They do, Scott, is that's not posted on our website, the agenda?
The agenda is.
And on the agenda, it said the motion was going to be deferred tonight. And I had one of the neighbors out there call me and I said, here's what it says on my agenda, it's going to be deferred. So I told him that, so.
They're still working on it. So they are going to bring in a plan. They're, I'm pretty confident they will be here at the June meeting, so.
Thank you for your concern in coming in tonight. Like I said, that's what we like to see then. Okay, we have a motion of second for deferral. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. We have one item left. Well, two, three. We, first we deal with number 16. Talking about propane tanks.
Are they making them look differently now?
Well, we will remind them propane tanks are not bullboards, of course. Always have to remind people of that. We were hopeful for a minute there, Kevin.
Well, it's up on my screen, I don't know why it's not up on your screen.
We're seeing that.
How about we try that?
Starting over. Here we go.
All right. I think that's going to work. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item is a conditional use permit to amend an existing permit to allow an expansion of bulk propane storage on this property. The property is on the west edge of Rowena. The petitioner would like, or the current operation allows for two 12,000 gallon propane tanks. And you can just spot them on the inside of the, this site plan, or this plan here. And the petitioner would like to expand that to four tanks for a total capacity of 89,600 gallons. The petitioner has submitted a site plan showing essentially that the tanks are going to go just north of the existing tanks. Prior to applying to this conditional use permit, staff has met with them and notified that the, the road, the private road that leads up to the property has not been adequately hard-surfaced. They have submitted a plan to hard-surface that, which upon review has been, does not meet the standards of the ordinance. The standards of the ordinance requires that the driving surface for a private roadway would be 24 feet wide for hard surface. And that would be, let's see if I can get a, this area up here is, and then it curves this direction, it's called Samstone. And then there'd be a driveway off Samstone right here is what it amounts to. Then the driveway itself would have to, have the zoning regulation of either hard surface or crushed asphalt as part of the hard surface requirement. Staff did site visit on May 4th. This is the current site. The site is well-kept. And you can see there, that was after some rain, the driveway up to the, the Highway 42. This is looking to the east on Highway 42 towards Rowena. From the driveway. Across the road, you can see that the area does have other commercial-type development with the, and industrial, with the industrial storage back there. And a big future sign of a gas station, interestingly enough. And then this would be to the west, which opens up towards the quarry. This is just to see the surrounding area that is towards the, the rear that this really is on the edge of the town of Rowena. I'll take it back to the site plan. As part of the conditional use permit process, you'll have to consider conditions. The first can, our criteria, different criteria before you approve are, first criteria, the effect upon use of enjoyment of the property and the surrounding area for the uses already permitted upon the property values within the surrounding area. This surrounding land in this area is mostly vacant and an expansion of this use would not likely affect the neighboring properties as well as there being other industrial-type uses in the area as well. Number two, the, the effect upon normal orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant in the area. Again, since it's mostly vacant and it's surrounded by commercial land, the whole, this whole parcel is zoned for commercial. So that'll likely develop into other commercial uses. So it'll not likely affect the future growth in the area. And it will not likely affect the agricultural land to the north either. Number three, the utilities, access road drainage and/or necessary facilities are provided. The, as described, the petitioner, or the property does not yet have Samstone paved. And, oh, okay. We'll let the, the petitioner describe the paved area. I haven't been out to the site recently, but that'll have to be met to, to meet the conditions. Then number five, measures taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. So none of these will constitute a nuisance. There shouldn't be any nuisance taking place on this. And any new lighting that is on the property will have to be fully cut off to prevent spilling of light on neighboring property. And number six, the health, safety, general welfare, the public and comprehensive plan. It is likely, the, it is unlikely that the requested expansion of use will create any additional health or safety or welfare concerns. This area is developing a commercial corridor and is designed for rural services such as this. The staff doesn't have concerns with the expansion, as noted kind of throughout the, the presentation here, the staff report, with the underlying of getting the pavement done. And you, here we do have conditions that can be considered if approval was to take place. And perhaps I'll read them, but with the underlying portions in your staff report is the portions that are being amended to make this work with their requests of expansion use. I don't know, should I read them or should we let the petitioner? So.
Haven't been in compliance.
All right. So then, the first condition would be the conditional use permit number 1726 is to amend CUP 1343 for the transportation terminal wholesale and refilling operation. Number two, the SD DOT access permit shall be obtained and access permit recorded within the register of deeds prior to commencement of operation. Number three, access to the site is from hard-surface road. And the access road and 50 feet extending north from the access road under the entrance and exit drives are required to be hard-surfaced in accordance with sections 1504 of Minnehaw County. onto the entrance and exit drives are required to be hard-surfaced in accordance with sections fifteen oh four of the Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. Number four, all hard-surface surfing scenes shall be completed and this is underlying new portion before the building permit for new replacement propane tank is issued. Number five, the property shall be platted and plat, filed with the register of deeds by December first, two thousand thirteen. Number six, property shall adhere to now underlying the revised site plan dated four ten seventeen. Number seven, the access road shall be a private roadway and shall be named roadway as directed in section five point oh three of the Minnehaw County subdivision ordinance. Number eight, the private roadway shall adhere to the requirements of the Minnehaw County subdivision ordinance unless the subdivision variance is approved. Number nine, a building permit is required for the installation of all new or replacement LP tanks. Number nine, signs shall be installed to the requirements of section eleven point ten, Red Rock Corridor overlay district. Number eleven, all outdoor lighting shall be fully cut off and fully shielded designed to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. Number twelve, a landscape plan shall be submitted to the planning department for approval, and this is added, and installed before building permit for new or replacement propane tank is issued. Number thirteen, the site shall meet all federal and state regulations for the placement of propane tanks. Number fourteen, the site must not exceed the storage capacity of eighty-nine thousand six hundred gallons of gas. With that, staff was recommending deferral, but we'll hear the petitioner and see what he has accomplished since staff has been there, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kevin. The petitioner, will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Greg Popke, he's, and I'm the owner, and the Merle Royce did get the black typing done.
When did they get it done?
Oh, sorry. They got it done, we called them April thirteenth and they got it done here a couple of weeks ago, I believe. Ten days ago or something is done. And they did the first fifty feet and they widened up the end, I don't know how wide the end is of the deal, and they put two layers in at five inches thick. So there, there's nothing tracked in, into the, on the road.
Fifty feet from Highway thirty-eight, I believe that is, isn't it?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, forty-two?
Yeah, Highway forty-two, yep.
Okay.
They just got behind with the weather and stuff and so they, we did, but I told, we told these guys we'd get it done.
Okay, and then how about the landscaping plan? Supposed to be submitted for approval?
We keep it mowed, I guess, I don't know what.
Was there any screening required on this, Kevin?
Yes, I didn't touch on that in the staff report. As part of the Red Rock Corridor, they will have to have landscaping for adjacent uses. As of right now, they are, there are no adjacent uses, it's all vacant land. But if there was to be new uses placed, then they would have to meet landscape requirements of trees and setbacks, so.
But not until someone does something adjacent to them?
That's, yes, that would be correct. So, so perhaps they could do it sooner than later and have it done before. And that way we have nice good trees when the neighbor comes in.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, anything else? Do you have to address?
That's all we were told to get done, was that approach, and we got that done.
Okay. Okay, just wanted, any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
We've heard any, no, it looks like there's no one else here to address this from the audience.
Ladies can speak too, if you want.
If you want to.
So, so we're looking for action?
Mr. Chairman, I just, is staff satisfied with the progress that's been made?
Okay, that's a good question. Is that the main concern, will that be paved? Partially in?
And I guess without seeing the site, it'd be difficult to know. You can kind of see on this here, let's see if I can pull up my mouse. Samstone place on the plat, and it comes up from here and then curves across the bottom of the property as if it would continue on through the bottom of the next, through the railroad area. So the... I don't know how far it is from the road to the property line is where Samstone's place would be.
So here's what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, if you, so if you're so inclined to approve it today, that would be fine. If there's a problem with it, we'll just bring it back to the next meeting and we'll... If there's an issue with the paving, we'll let the applicant know and we may need to bring it back.
As noted in the, the recommended conditions, it can, it stated that the pavement has to be done before the permit is issued, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I would move approval based on the, the, being a subject to staff approval. Inspection, final inspection and approval and that all ordinances have been met as required before the expansion take place.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second?
Mr. Chair.
Discussion?
I have a question about item twelve, because it does say landscaping plan shall be submitted for approval and installed. So I think we have to be clear if we want just the plan or if we expect it installed.
Good. No, because it's vacant land, I, I would not expect it to be installed at this time until vacant, becomes unvacant.
So the question then becomes, okay, so someone builds next door to them, will we require that person to screen what they're doing? And then this one, then Popke's propane, is it gonna also have to screen as well?
Yes.
A double screen, which isn't all bad, but a little bit redundant.
The, the ordinance for the Red Rock Corridor, if I'm not mistaken, has, between commercial properties, they have like fifteen feet in how many trees for every distance of property? So that would be the way to move forward with it, but I guess since it's not being used, that's where I'd go with it.
I don't know if I would need to amend my motion, but I would still stick with as long as the ordinances, as they're in place, are met per staff's review. Meaning if, if it's not required at this time, then as long as they've met.
Doug, you still seconding that motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries and we move to Kevin again. Your CAFO report. Just to plant trees now rather than later.
If we can, if we can stick a shovel darn that far.
That's what I'm thinking too.
The rocks are close.
First you last, or that was the one before.
Yeah.
Yep.
A gas station, across the street someday.
Okay, Kevin, report.
So, this is just kind of a reoccurring old business now to review the CAFO ordinance in aquaculture. Last month, we reviewed the ordinance and made some changes as were requested of us and is now in front of you again. What we're looking for is whether or not you're comfortable with this proposed ordinance to move forward with publication and public hearing.
Okay, I thought your summary did a good job of kind of summing up with things, potential changes and stuff. Are there comments from commissioners? Discussion? Or questions from Kevin?
I know there was a little bit of discussion about the timing of the, of a hearing because of planting and anyone that wanted to come in, so I mean, we can have it in June, we can have it in July, you'll just need to let us know when you'd like to... If we're ready to move on for a hearing, which month do you'd like to have it in and we'll have it ready for that month?
Wasn't our discussion last time to kind of be done by August?
It was the goal.
You'd be the goal.
I'd better shoot for June then, I suppose, huh?
That's when you have to start it in order for everything to...
Well, we'll advertise the ordinance amendment then for the June twenty-sixth meeting.
So where does that all go, get published at for notification?
Well, we publish it in all three papers. We publish a hearing notice saying we're gonna be, that we will be revising the zoning ordinance and then we list the specific articles, you know, like the, every article that we're changing and what we're changing. And that gets published, we have the hearing in front of the planning commission. You'll make a recommendation and then we have a hearing in front of the county commission. Two hearings basically, or two discussions. The first time that we set the hearing date, they authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice. We publish again in the three papers and then we have the final hearing, basically two or three weeks later after the hearing notice is published.
Okay, what are the three papers then?
The Brandon paper, the Argus leader, and...
The industrial.
Bell Rapids Tribune.
Okay.
So is, so we need a motion to move forward then, is what we need?
Is one hearing enough and maybe do we want to have discussion meetings, you know, around the county in Hartford and Garrettson?
Well, forget you that then, it's unlikely we would have it approved by August.
Right, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there.
Another level.
I think, you know, when you let people get their, you know, issues out, then they're not as militant about it as if it shows up in the middle of the night.
Well, I don't know if it's showing up in the middle of the night if you're advertising it, you're having a hearing here, plus you'll have a hearing with the county.
Yeah.
I mean, it isn't like... Anything secretive about it at all?
Nope.
Well, the other, I mean, and I, I think you can also, one option is to play it by ear, you have the public hearing here. If there is an outcry of...
And you can do it.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
You could continue it for two or three months and then have some outreach.
That'll be our plan.
I agree.
Reasonable proposal.
So I think we have the plan.
That could, yeah, because the reaction of that meeting could definitely have an effect. So we need a motion to move forward with that timetable?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Okay, we have a motion to move forward in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And anything else, new business?
Well, I'll give you a little bit of an update. Last Tuesday, we had the appeal of the fireworks stand at Iverson Crossing. Josh Payer appealed Andy Jorgensen's conditional use permit. He never showed up.
That's always good.
I mean, it's too easy to appeal.
That's, the guy that had the chickens was, did not want this kid to have his, his fireworks stand because the guy with the chickens also owned a fireworks stand. And he was at the meeting where we approved the, the, this kid's fireworks stand, but he never objected then because he was trying to slip his chickens through.
So we're getting back to bringing Sicilian asses out in the country. See, I have a question, you know, I know I brought that light issue up to Hartford because that is a problem, you know? But so, have you fixed the, the tower at Wall Lake has not been fixed yet?
We've sent him a courtesy letter, so we're working on it.
Because it's strobing into my bedroom at night and I don't like it.
Does your wife?
No.
We're gonna replace it with a windmill.
Well, a windmill, just have a flashing red light, I wouldn't see that. But the reason I notice it is, and this happened, the state radio tower's a mile west of there and that's in direct eyesight of our house, you don't even notice that one. This one is just, it's on the daytime setting is what it is. It's not going to the night setting like it's supposed to. And it's just nasty.
Tomorrow is our tour.
Yes.
And I think three of you have indicated, Paul.
I'm in.
Bonnie and Mike are going to be here.
You're in, right?
Tomorrow at nine thirty, I think we'll be leaving around nine thirty, so if you're here a little bit early.
We're leaving from here at nine thirty?
From here, the bus will be across the street is where the bus is gonna be meeting.
Congregate in this room?
Right in this area, I would say.
I would say in this area, we'll just leave from here. You're all so welcome if you would like, if you like to get free... Doug, we're going to Doug's Dairy at three forty, thereabouts. He'll be providing steak dinners, oh no, that's...
Sweet. Perfect. We'll be there. That'll pick up attendants.
Yeah.
Beer as well, I'm assuming then?
That's, that's just to the south of Coeur d'Alene.
Is this the National Fighting Thing you attended?
Yeah, I just handed out a little brief understanding. One of the most interesting sessions of service and care at the County Planning Division of the American Planning Association. We select sessions from a pool that we get and we review them. And that was one of the sessions that we take, it wasn't very well attended, but it was central Arkansas, so Little Rock. They did a water shed management plan of Lake Movel, which is where they walk, where they get their water from. Which they went through and created, they developed the sediment erosion control standards for all new development in the area, but it's a different setting. The lakefront property, so you have a lot of different things going on, uses. And then they also created a land use plan to help complement their subdivision regulations to help, help manage what's... It's actually according to the USGS, one of the cleaners, cleaner than a lot of major river recoveries in the state. So it's a very, very interesting session and, you know, pretty important to what we're going through, especially the program. Just stormwater management, you know, a lot of times. Their process, it was like a ten-year process for them to start.
Well, it takes time. When you deal with watersheds, it takes time. Anything else? Any new business, anyone else needs to bring up? Got to get Commissioner Barth to shut his phone off.
If the Twins were down six to nothing, they're up eleven to six right now.
Okay, we need a motion for adjournment then.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Twins are finally winning and it's a major event.
Yeah. Probably should have stopped the meeting halfway through for a little update.